Okay, um, I guess technically I have to run this meeting for a second because our chairman is Ted Minor, whose term had ended. So we don't have a chairman right now. So I guess I'll call the meeting of January 4th, 2022 to order for the McCandless Planning Commission at 7:03. Very exciting. I've never gotten to say that before. So for the election of the chair, and Steve, correct me if I get any of this procedure wrong, but I'm thinking maybe we'll do it the same way that council did for their positions, which is the floor is open for nominations. Once there are no further nominations, everybody just says the name of who they would like to vote for for the position. Steve, is that correct?
Yeah, that's good.
And, oh, I'm sorry. For those of you who are new, Steve Cordell is the town attorney. Dan Dizerott sitting behind you there is our town engineer from Gateway and Kim Zachary, of course, is our council liaison for this, for this committee board commission, whatever you want to call us. Anyway, um, I guess the floor is open for nominations for chair.
I move to nominate Dan Cordum as chairman of the planning commission. Do I formally accept your nomination or do I?
Steve, why don't you tell us what's next?
I don't think you should say it, right?
Well, it has to be voted on. Do I accept or deny the nomination?
I mean, if you don't want it, you should definitely say I'm not interested.
Thank you, Greg. I'll accept that nomination.
Right. Are there any other nominations? We get to close it, Steve?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, so do we need a second for this?
No, I just would do a roll call. Since there's just one individual, you could just make a motion to appoint Mr. Cordum as the chair of the planning commission.
Oh, okay. Well, if anyone wants to make that motion, that's probably a cleaner way to do it for my note-taking purposes. If that's all right with everyone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so Greg, you made essentially, you made the motion.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, Sean, you're gonna second. And Steve, do we need to do a roll call or do we do a yay-nay for this one? Okay, yeah, you're nay.
Yay.
Yeah.
Yay.
That sounds unanimous to me. Um, okay, so you're all here, so that's seven. Cool. All right, Dan, come on down.
I even get to change seats.
Yeah.
Wow.
You get the chair seat. Although I suppose if you do end up wanting to sit there to see the screen better, we could do that as well. Not something I anticipated.
Turn around, I will.
All right, so it is your duty now to hold the vice chair nomination.
I'll open it up for any nominations for vice chair of the committee of planning commission. Resounding.
This is just really all you'd have to do is if Dan is not able to attend, you would instead run the meeting off of the agenda.
I will nominate Jonathan as vice chair.
I'm second. That helps.
Okay. Who wants to be our official second?
I second. Well, you start that.
I seconded.
Ow, all right. First official motion. Okay, voice vote.
Aye.
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 Seven to zero. Congratulations to our new elected officers.
Easiest campaign we've ever run.
Did we do everything okay, Steve?
All good, yep.
Awesome.
So are you ready to proceed?
Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna move over to the computer so I can screen share some stuff.
RJ, can I be heard?
Um, Kim and Steve, are you okay? Do you get to hear Dan well?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you. RJ has already called the meeting to order, so the next thing to do is go through the agenda, as best I know. And the first item that I have on my agenda is a review and recommendation of the lot line revision known as the Yalch Plan of Lots located at 345 and 385 Richard Road.
I had Walnut Court next, but we can do Yalch if you'd like.
I'm just going by what I have.
You might have the prelim one. We'll get to, hey, Chris, would you mind just putting Dan off?
Certainly, yeah.
Website. Thank you.
I have Yalch.
The, um... That's okay. This is Walnut Court.
Do you want me to go Walnut Court or just should we stick with the Yalch?
That's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let's stick with the Yalch.
All right, then we'll do that. Decisive action. Good sign.
We have someone to present?
Uh, I don't see anyone in the audience. This, this, uh, we were mostly communicating with the engineer surveyor, you know, design professional, I suppose, on this project. Um, all right, I'm gonna set the screen up so that you all can see this, and then I'm gonna come over closer to the mic. That's all right. I can explain what's going on here. It's not too complicated. Um, so this is a lot off of Richard Road. Essentially, what they're doing here is, I don't have my pointer, so I can't do my Vanuken computer. These two lots are essentially already existing. Right here is where the existing lot line is for this lot that contains this single-story ranch home, which means that this main lot actually wraps all the way around it to over here. This section here is actually part of this lot. What they're proposing to do with this is simply do a lot line revision to eliminate all of this, close it off here, and make a lot that honestly, I think, makes a little more sense than what they've got now.
There are two different rooms, aren't there, I think?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. Yeah. So it appears that the larger lot is selling that little bit of property, the smaller one.
So he's selling it.
I, I mean, I haven't spoken in personally, but that's what it would appear to be.
Yeah, there's, there's signatures on the plan for the others.
Yeah.
Okay. The only question I had was, uh, that, that, I checked this against the Alguini tax assessment website, and they, where you have tax parcel 1348 dash N dash 294 being 5.779 acres, but the, the tax assessment has it as 3.9056. Would that make, does that make any difference to this whole thing or?
Um, from a, from a zoning or subdivision perspective, it wouldn't change what they're able to do with any of this. That's probably just a typo. There were a couple of comments from the county that, you know, the surveyor would have to clean up before it was approved, you know, for, for the final version from council. They sent me a couple revisions, but they just haven't been reviewed by Gateway yet.
Okay.
Yeah, the, I think all of the comments, both a couple from the county as well as from Gateway, were sort of just formatting issues.
And has Gateway looked at this? And do you have any questions or issues?
Yeah, we have reviewed the plan. We issued a letter dated December 14th. We had three minor comments to the plan and nothing that can't be addressed. I have not seen any revisions yet, but I don't see that anything is here that would prevent it from moving on if it was approved condition upon our letter being addressed.
I think they just sent the revisions over yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, very new.
Okay. Are there any comments from anybody on the commission? Sounds like there are none. And do we have any public people involved?
Uh, the only other person on the Zoom is a developer for a different application, so guessing you don't have a public comment in the audience. So in that case, no.
Okay. So we're open then for a motion to recommend the lot line revision known as the lot, the Yalch Plan of Lots located at 345 and 385 Richard Road. And that, that motion or recommendation probably should have a condition that it meet the Gateway conditions as spelled out in their letter. So can we have that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the lot revision subject to satisfying the comments of Gateway.
Oh, second. Having a motion in a second? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Make sure to get that cleaned up before the council. Walnut Court next?
Walnut Court is next. Review, item number two on the agenda is review and a recommendation of the subdivision plan known as Walnut Court Lot 103 located at 423, 425, 427, 429, 431, 433, and 435 Walnut Court.
I will open that up in just a minute here, but while I am finding this, for those of you who are not at their first planning commission meeting, this will be very familiar. Um, this is yet another one of our townhome chop-ups for Walnut Court, as I like to call them. Um, so basically, for background purposes, Walnut Court was a townhome plan that was approved probably 2018, 2019. Greg, you might be the one that would remember. Because I think you were the liaison back then.
Yeah.
But, uh, so each time a townhome block is completed, once the foundations are laid, they come back and chop up each of the units into individual lots so they can be sold individually. Um, so I believe this is the third out of five that we're expecting. Again, um, there were just a couple little formatting comments, I think, between Gateway, and I don't even think the county had anything to add. So this is, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty clean. I'm sure they can clean anything up before council.
Okay. Again, any comments from Gateway?
Yeah, we issued a letter dated December 27th, 2004, and they have addressed all of the technical comments that we had. Just the only thing is, RJ, I haven't seen the county letter if there's anything that they have.
I, I don't think that they had any comments at all. They just sent an email.
Yeah, so I think it's in order without any conditions.
Good. Any comments from the commission? I don't hear any. And anything public comments?
We don't have anyone online.
Okay. Well, that will be, this will be easy, too, that I need a motion to recommend the subdivision of the plan known as the Walnut Court Lot 103 located at 423 through 435 Walnut Court. Can I have that motion?
I'll move.
Brendan?
Woo, a chorus. Greg, I think you got it in first.
A chorus of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two unanimous.
Okay, so this is, we've got a couple developers on the line for, so we'll...
And what I have next, at least on my agenda, is the McCandless Square Place, uh, Phase Three.
Yes, I think that's the only...
And I can give you an updated copy. The final is actually...
Okay, thank you. Let me know when you're ready, RJ.
Okay, so we've got Jerry Kledowski and Marty Gillespie. Marty, I think you were here before when you were at the master plan. Is that correct?
Not the last meeting, but the meeting before.
Yes. Yeah, we actually didn't have one last time.
Okay, that's why I wasn't there.
So, so, yeah, so we're, we're kind of in this smaller room impromptu here, so I'm gonna be running back and forth between the table and the computer. If you can't see us, I'm sorry, couldn't move the camera. Um, but I have all the PDFs that both of you have sent of the elevations, you know, the drawings, things like that. So feel free to just tell me what you would like to have pulled up, and I will do it accordingly.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Jerry Kledowski with CEC, Seven Environmental Consultants, here to present the plans for Laurel Communities for the McCandless Square Townhome Project. I'm gonna apologize in advance. I'm feeling a little bit under the weather, so if I have to mute myself and cough a little bit, I apologize. RJ, if you could start off with just the cover sheet, we can go over basically where, where this site sits in relation to the rest of the project.
Let me just clear out some of these plans here. I'm, uh, used to being able to run two computers. This is new for me. All right, here we go. Tell me if I'm on the right page, Jerry.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. So the overall development is the approximately 25-acre Blazer Drive development. We came in back in 2019 for the senior living and cottages. We did an initial master plan for that project that involved the assisted living cottages, the retail development, and then we had a flex parcel that is currently where we are proposing to do the townhome development. Back in October, we received approval from the town for the revised or amended master plan for the development, which allows us to do the townhome development on the western side of the project, which is what's shown here in bold. If you want to go to page 200.
It's gonna be scrolling a little bit. There we go.
So this is an enlargement of the development. There is a northern triangle-shaped parcel, and then the southern rectangular parcel known as Lot Three. The northern parcel is about 1.7 acres. The southern parcel is 2.9 acres approximately. Combined, we're gonna have 54 units proposed. They vary in width from 20 feet to 22 to 24 feet, depending on which model is, is used there. There are 19 units in the upper triangle, and there are 35 in the southern triangle. All of the utilities are currently on Cooper Street. Cooper Street is the one that connects to Blazer Drive in the upper left-hand corner. There's water, sanitary, there is a existing storm system that follows the roadway that goes to a, what I would call a regional stormwater facility on the east side of the project that was done in the initial phase. On the southern side, those 35 units, all of the storm sewers are out in the street. They will connect up to the existing system. All of the utilities are currently on site. We're just gonna have to run a couple of extensions for those utilities. Uh, we are in the process now of coordinating with both electric, water, and sanitary to make sure that everybody is on board with the revisions that we're making. We are planning on submitting a revised planning module to MTSA. Uh, we did submit one for the townhomes several months ago, but it was a different mix. I think we had, we might have had less townhomes than what we currently show, so we want to update that to make sure the authority is up to, up to date on the calculations. ENS for this project is covered by an overall NPDES permit, and similar to what we did on the retail portion of this project is, uh, we've just amended the ENS plan, kept it under the same permit, just provided updated drawings to the conservation district. They subsequently approved those, and we are going to do the exact same thing for this one. We will provide an ENS plan, which is included in the drawing set, to the conservation district for their review, uh, and what we would expect is a minor modification letter saying the revisions and the updates to the ENS plan are approved. Uh, storm waters, I mentioned briefly earlier, is all addressed by the regional pond to the west of the development. Uh, we have done some, uh, updated pipe sizing calculations for the proposed storm sewers uh, within this part of the development. Uh, there was a comment on Gateway's letter regarding the overall system, so uh, we are dis- uh, discharging less impervious, so it is our indication that it's gonna generate less flow to that piping system, but we are gonna update the entire model so that we could provide all of those updated calculations as a, uh, in our response to comment letter. All of the geotech for the project was all done initially. All of the same conditions apply. We're not gonna have any large fills or large cuts in this project, but the contractor will be required to follow the, uh, the recommendations of the geotechnical report. Um, we do have, as I mentioned, we have the approved master plan for this development. We have provided an updated landscaping plan that shows our proposed planting. That's on, uh, sheet 700, if you want to scroll to that.
See if there's a faster way to do this. All right. You said you wanted 700, right?
That's the overall, yeah.
Okay.
So if, yeah, you go to 701, that's an enlargement of the upper portion.
There you go.
Yeah, we're, we're providing a code-compliant landscape plan with shade trees, uh, some ornamental trees. Uh, if you go to the next page, it'll show that planting plan there as well. Same thing. We're providing shade trees and ornamental trees throughout the development that is code-compliant with, uh, with your ordinances. I don't know if you want to go step by step through the letter. I know that there are a couple issues that we would need to discuss, but as far as presentation, do we want to talk about the, the buildings and what they look like? Are there any questions about the plans?
Uh, yes, I have just one. Have you coordinated the plantings with the recent EAC recommendations for the plants they would like to see?
Uh, we have not. Who should I be contacting?
Yeah, Jerry, we can, we can send you that PDF. It was just approved a couple of months ago, so you probably started this submittal before we had it out, but it's, um, it's also in the website under the Planning and Development Files section. Um, I believe it's called Landscape Planting Guide, so you can also grab that from there.
Okay, yeah.
I can actually tell, I can tell you, Jerry, that the, everything that you're proposing on your landscaping plan, except for the American linden and the European hornbeam, is on our recommended planting list.
Okay. Okay, so we'll have to do some swaps there. That's fine.
Yeah, honey locust might be nice.
Yeah, it's, um, they, they worked on it with some different input from, you know, arborists, uh, looking at the PA Department of, I think it's DCNR. I want to say Natural Resources, um, some of the, it's native planting focus, basically.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's no problem. We'll take a look at that.
As long as you don't have any Bradford pears, you're doing okay at the end of the day.
That's the big joke in our office. Anytime they mention landscaping, I tell them, see, don't worry, I'll do it. Bradford pears and burning bushes everywhere.
Uh, best, best Christmas gift to me this year was they finally banned them.
Yeah, I saw the articles. So if, do you want to pull up those, uh, those renderings of some of the buildings to show what the, the buildings are gonna look like?
Sure.
And we can let Marty talk about the buildings and...
Okay, I've got a file named Brookwood Elevation and a file named Color Perspective. Which would you prefer?
Probably the color perspective. That's the one.
Yeah, so these are, uh, we built, my name is Marty Gillespie with Laurel Communities. We, um, we built the townhomes at Bakery Square, uh, the ones in the Strip District that are downtown, so, and in Lawrenceville, we've done some. We try to do something that's not like just the normal townhomes that have been built in the suburbs for the past, you know, 30, 40 years in Pittsburgh. Um, so depending on the color palettes, the townhomes we would do in McCandless would be a combination of brick, um, hardy plank. Currently, we, we definitely like the black windows, uh, and then the garage doors that we've been using, especially because they're front entry, are that, uh, frosted glass style, which gives it a little bit of a contemporary look. They're not too modern, but I think it, it's a, it's a nice type of product to use in a mixed use. The other projects at Bakery Square and the Strip District are similar to this one where we did the townhomes, there were apartments, and then there was some type of retail. So it fits in well. The neighborhood turns out looking really nice. If you guys are ever out uh, in those areas, drive through and see the finished product. Um, the strip is almost done, bakery's done. But, uh, that gives you kind of an idea. The actual colors and things like that, we'll get into detail with our architect to pick the actual brick, but that's a very good representation of what it would look like.
Is that a rooftop balcony that I see around the back on the left side?
Yeah, it is. That end unit, um, we have optional terraces, so that entails there's a finished area. It's like a flex room. People do it as a, a bar or an extra room, and then you walk off of that onto an open-air terrace. They're, they're really nice people. I'd say more than 50% of our buyers have, uh, done that option on the townhome.
Very nice.
Yep, thank you.
One of the things that I, uh, try to focus on is the fact that these buildings have a front and a back, and sometimes it's the back that faces the road most traveled. And I, I would like to make sure that the rear views or the, the road views are, are just as appealing and nice as the ones we're seeing here. Is there anything that you've got that will indicate that you've taken some, uh, time to get the backs just as nice for those people driving along Blazer Drive?
Well, so the way that we oriented them, um, I don't know, RJ, how hard it is to go back to, uh,
200.
Rolls, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
So it's, it's a good question. When we, uh, when we designed this with Jerry and our architect, we wanted to make sure that as you came in off of Blazer Drive onto, uh, the main road, that we'd have a good streetscape. So if you look at the overall, you'll have that one side unit that'll have windows on the side. The first one on the right is you come down. Let, let's start on the right-hand side, the, uh, where the rentals are. Um, I can't see what number that is, RJ, on the drawing.
Is this, uh, do you want it, here is this good or do you want it?
Yeah, no, this is good. Unit number 35, yeah. So unit 35, as you come down, you'll see the side of that. If you kind of look, um, that last perspective that we had, the, the brick went up the side, and there's also windows, and there's some variation. It's not just a flat side. And then the next buildings on the right-hand side, as you drove in, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 on the right on Cooper Street, those are actually the fronts of the buildings, so you won't have any sides there. And then if you look across the street on Cooper, those are also fronts of the buildings. Um, so we wanted to make sure that Cooper Street had a nice, the, the streetscape would be the fronts, so that when you drove in, you wouldn't see the backs of the buildings. And then on Blazer, up on Blazer, that's units on this drawing, 36, 37, 38, 39. That is also the front of the building, uh, that would be facing Blazer. And the back of the buildings, we created that little enclave in that triangle there, so the rear of the building would be facing uh, the paving and the little courtyard area. So I think to answer your question, uh, just kind of the way that CEC and we designed it, um, you're not gonna be looking at a bunch of backs of townhomes.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to answer any questions. If you have any questions about the townhomes, and then, like Jerry said, RJ, we're happy to answer any questions that, uh, planning commission might have about, uh, the plan itself.
There, there were two items. One, I remember that Kim Zachary had some stairs. Are they still depicted on the plan? If they are, that's fine. I just didn't see them coming down off of Blazer.
Uh, you know what? I, we talked about this recently. I think I even spoke with the board authority about this, and I, ah, there they are. I knew there was someone there. Yep.
Yeah, that, those would not be done by us. That, that would be done by Kevin Dockerty.
Right. But we get... Yeah, we, so we are providing a second access to Blazer Drive. You could see there right by the entrance to Cooper Street. We have a sidewalk graded in there. You know, we're gonna work a little bit because I don't, we don't really care for that orientation of everything, but we're gonna, we'll work with the architect and, uh, and smooth that out, make it a little bit nicer, but you will have access to the intersection from there as well.
Kim, is that, is that as you remember your stair request?
Um, yes, I just wanted to make sure that, yes, it is. Good.
And then the, the last thing that I'll mention is that I, there was a fair amount of discussion about parking. And I don't know how it resolved, but was there going to be sufficient parking for visitors? Excess parking beyond those who actually live in the unit? How was all of that? Excess parking beyond those who actually live in the unit? How was all of that resolved?
Yeah, so, um, I think what we're proposing, um, on the, I'll call it the continental side, the thirty, uh, thirty-five units, that side. Thank you, RJ. We changed the design and we moved the buildings so that, um, if you had a visitor, the visitor could park in the driveway. Those are front entry units except for the ones on, um, Cooper Street, and we made those a little bit longer. So there's going to be, there's plenty of parking for cars or visitors on that side of the street. And we liked, um, keeping the open space green and having the opportunity to plant like landscaping and things. So we didn't actually do any extra parking, like little lots like we have on the other side of the street. So on that side, again, you're going to have at least two car, you can get two cars in every one of those driveways. In addition, all of these townhomes are two car garage townhomes. So on that side, we thought that that would be a good strategy for keeping it looking nice, making sure we have the green space, the impervious area for runoff. That's what we did there. On the side with Kevin Dougherty with the retail, we did that enclave design. Uh, again, trying to get the units to front onto Cooper. So you had a great streetscape, because I think what Continental built there looks really, really good. So keeping that consistent and having a, a high-end feel to it, we did this enclave design. Now you'll notice on this side of the street, because some of the, the driveways are shorter, we added some parking, um, at that hammerhead on the one side. We also, that side of the street is directly basically connected feet, you know, ten feet away from the parking that is around that common courtyard area. And there's all those diagonal spaces there. So we think the people that are visiting those people, it's going to be very easy to park in one of those spaces. And, and I don't think that's going to be heavily used by the retail, because that's the farthest area away from the retail. So when Kevin does his retail, I'm assuming the restaurants or whatever he does, when you go there, you're going to want to park right in front of it. So I think that's going to be an area that visitors can use. I did talk to RJ today, and we talked a little bit about adding some more spaces potentially. Between, if you zoom in a little bit, RJ, uh, I can get the unit numbers. We were looking at unit forty-five and thirty-six. You see that area there that's got some green open space? We thought maybe on that side, we could add some in, um, maybe put up some landscaping to make it look pretty, a little hardscaping uh, around the parking area with like a little brick wall or, you know, like a versalock wall type of thing. It's a short, but nothing big, but just to aesthetically make it look nice. Because again, I want to be sensitive. These are not inexpensive townhomes. They'll be expensive. When you come in down Cooper Street, we want to make sure that it has a good sense of arrival. So, um, the parking here is significantly greater, that the guest parking is much greater than what we had at Bakery Square or in the Strip. And we haven't had any issues there with, um, with guest parking. So I think strategy wise, that's what we proposed, um, uh, for your guys' review.
And when you say that you, you can park in front of some of these units, is that? Can you park in such a way that you then, you don't interfere with the sidewalk?
Yes, correct. Uh, that on the side, that was the side with, uh, on the continental side, yep.
Yeah, Jerry. A little bit more context here, uh, because Marty and I did another, a good conversation with that. So these guys on this side here, you can, you can get a car like entirely off of the curb line. Um, and they're wide enough that you can park two beside. And the way their parking regulations work for residential units is you have to have two off-street parking spaces of which a driveway can count. Per unit essentially. Garages don't count, but driveway spaces, if they're big enough to hold two cars, those can. So, you know, maybe, I don't have the exact dimensions of this particular sheet, but I, I did have, um, gave them to take a look. And these ones are, are definitely all right. Um, and I think it wa- was a really nice addition, um, that they put this green space in here. You know, it's not on the landscaping plan sheets, but you can see that they've got some nice stuff planned. That's why it's, that's a good feel, you know, for this neighborhood. I'm concerned about this one. And like Marty said, you know, we did talk about potentially adding something over here, maybe picking up a few more spots here and there. But these are, these are short rear entry driveways. I think a couple over here are okay. But these ones have some challenges. So ultimately, you know, part of the discussion tonight and eventually at council, depending on how many more spaces they can pick up, is, you know, what, what's, whether anyone wants to look at it as a trade-off for a modification. You can do a design modification for number of parking spots. That is ultimately discretionary for council. But, you know, what, whatever they might want to add about whether they think guest parking is going to be an issue, what the balance is between neighborhood what the feel versus parking lot, asphalt versus green space. I think that that's really kind of what the commission needs to think about, particularly with these units up here.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's a good explanation, RJ. And if you look, just as an example, when you come into that side off of Cooper, uh, you see the little triangle in the center there? So currently that's green space. So we could put some parking spaces there, but we're trying to create this nice little enclave and get some landscaping and a sense of arrival. I thi- I do think, again, this was a conversation today, and I haven't reviewed it with Jerry, but I do think there's a good opportunity that we can get some other spaces on that side, uh, where I was talking about unit forty-five and thirty-six. And then I, and I think, like she said, we could talk about whatever modification or design thing. I think those other spaces on the courtyard right next to us would definitely get utilized. No, you know, selling these townhomes, these won't be quite as expensive, but, you know, bakery was seven fifty, eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand. The Strip District was a million. Doing these high-end neighborhoods, um, the visitor parking has not been an issue. So on, on, on our end, we're not remotely concerned that, um, there would be an issue on this particular project.
Is that because rich people don't have friends?
Yep, that's why.
Okay.
Exactly, Nick. No, honestly, they, you know, you're, you're, uh, McCandless, we talked today, McCandless, uh, it is unique that the garage is never counted for spaces. It's, it's the only municipality I've seen this so far in, um, because the people do, they park, I mean, one of the big selling features is these are big enough garages that you can get two cars very comfortably with a little bit of storage in front of it. So, um, that's where people are parking.
Hey Marty, this is, uh, Dan, I was, I, I just have a question. That stick of, uh, between forty and forty-four, uh, is that able to drift a little bit towards Blazer Drive?
That whole, that whole bill, you mean shift that whole building towards Blazer?
Towards Blazer, which would then open up forty-nine through fifty-four to get the full, might be able to get the full two car, you know, a full width there rather than this, the ten feet.
Yes.
If you scroll up to, um, sheet C five hundred or C five oh one.
I've got five hundred's overall utility, five oh one's large.
So, so five oh one, there's a main, uh, Penn Power electric line that comes through there with an easement that's associated with it. So we can't really get that building any closer to Blazer Drive. That's, see, that's what's part of the problem with trying to fit all these in here is in order for Penn Power to provide energy to the assisted living development, we had to put this redundant loop through the project. Uh, I don't want to say early on, but, you know, pretty early into the construction process. And we tried to, we tried to cite that line where we thought would be out of the way of any development that would happen here. And then, you know, the, the Marty came along with his development, and that was already set. So we sort of had to develop everything around that easement.
For, for those who were not part of the phase one and original master plan, this was originally plotted as a little more commercial and an office flex space. Obviously, we know what happened to office flex spaces in the last two years. So that's, you know, partially why they've reoriented the use.
Hey, hey Jerry, uh, question. Is that a, on, on those end units on that building that Dan was referring to? Or is that a four-foot step off of that back? Like, could that be, could that be a two-foot step, and then we could gain two more feet? Could we slide those two end units back? Not to be exactly parallel, but either a foot or two?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay, so Dan, um, and you don't have his drawing, but today I was talking to RJ, so I remember this. Uh, units forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three, okay? Those driveways are twenty-one feet, uh, deep from the paving to the garage doors, twenty-one feet. So if we moved unit forty and forty-four back uh, to be closer to being flush with forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, I believe that we can get those to be at least sixteen, maybe eighteen feet in length. And if you do that, Dan, then you can get, you can get cars, uh, you know, the guest parking for all five of those units, they're going to have a driveway that you can put two cars in, if that.
Actually, the end units, these ones may already be sixteen right here. So you're definitely, get two more feet, you'll pick up eighteen.
Yeah, so I think, I think Dan, that'll help, that'll help that area. The buildings on, um, you know, on the main drag, I don't want to flip those and make those front entry to get bigger driveways, because I want the streetscape to, to maintain, to have that frontage on there. It's going to look a, a lot better. And now you're only dealing with, you know, a handful of units that don't have the dedicated, uh, garage. Out of the whole project, there's only three buildings that would have it. And that's why I think these other extra spaces, there's two spaces between units number, uh,
Thirty-nine and forty.
Thirty-nine and forty, there's those two spaces there. You've got the other ones internal. We have the ten spaces over next to the park. And then maybe we can add three or four more spaces at the end of the driveway on that other side. I think that'll, that'll make that enclave area. They'll be in great shape with guest parking.
The, um, parking requirements, the, on C two hundred, shows that parking provided is a hundred and seventy-eight.
Yeah, that included the garages, though.
Ah, okay. But you do have, I think I, I've asked this question, um, repeatedly to Kevin Dougherty, but there is a cross easement agreement between. Are these, uh, units going to have, um, individual garbage pickup? A dumpster area or any?
No, I, I, I would, I, I think our, I don't know if we've had that question yet, um, RJ. I was assuming all of our other communities, they do have individual pickup.
Yeah, you know, I'm going to be honest, nobody has asked me that question for townhomes yet either. So I'm going to have to look at our code and see, you know, if there's a particular situation for garbage collection. That would be in, um, I think probably in the seven hundred or nine hundreds phone, so that's item zoning. Not that I can't figure it out, but I just don't know off the top of my head. Um, I wouldn't, well, I shouldn't expect it.
Well, I was, my point in asking was more
Where's the dumpster?
That there's no dumpster area.
Yeah.
Isn't there a picture of a dumpster? I thought I saw a picture of it.
Uh, well, there's, there's one sort of like off camera, kind of like over in this area for the phase two. If that's what, yeah, I, I, I didn't see one of the materials for phase three.
Yeah, we, we should confirm that because, uh, that is definitely a preferential, preferential situation would be to have uh, the garbage pickup, just like a single-family house.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check on that unless anyone happens to live in a townhome here that can tell me why your garbage pickup. Um, okay, we'll figure it out.
And, and if it is, uh, individual pickup, can we see the, uh, turning radiuses for the, for garbage truck? Okay, I'm, I'm only really concerned around that little green space area, but there's.
Yeah, we, we actually ran the fire truck through there and it makes it through.
I was just going to say that, yeah, we had a fire. They did actually make a little tweak, I think.
Yeah, yeah, the, the other streets are twenty feet, but this one is twenty-four to allow for turning.
Do you have any idea where you're going to site the mail cluster blocks?
Yeah, on this plan, basically right in the middle of the, the triangle landscape plan. Oh, that, so, yeah.
This just seemed like it was a little easier to.
Yeah, it is. So right in between the two crosswalks, I would envision they'd want to be in there somewhere. It right in that triangle landscape area. I'm sorry, what was that?
To throw a bench in, if it's going to be a little courtyard, get the mail on a bench.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I guess it's really up to the, the post office. Do they, do they care where it's placed? I mean, it should be centrally located.
Well, I, I, my experience is that you have to work that detail out in a perfect site.
Yeah, we do. We, we, we talked to the postmaster in all of our communities and, uh, on, on this side, I would be shocked if it's not in that, uh, green space area in the center. And then, uh, down below, down below, I, we, I haven't thought that far through. Again, we'll have to talk to them, but I'm assuming there'll, there's a logical space. You want it to be convenient. The people would just pull up, get out of their car, grab their, uh, stuff or walk to it. So neither, neither, I mean, these are nice little, uh, compact neighborhoods in this development, so, getting the mail, you know, it's going to be a nice stroll, and we have sidewalks provided and walkways, so I think, uh, wherever they, they do, they pretty much do kind of tell you where it needs to be, though.
Can I ask a question? I'm, I just want to make sure I'm clear. On this parking required, it says parking required is a hundred and eight. And that includes the garages, correct?
No, the one seventy-eight includes the garages.
Okay, so fifty-four townhouses, seventy, seventy cars for garages? I thought each garage was two cars. Or am I, I read this?
No, you're, you're right. So it's.
Well, there may be, the council may be a little off because they have some of these, um, parking bays here.
Right.
Here, two here. There might be some scattered down on, um.
Well, there is, and I ask you, if you have fifty-four townhouses, two car garages, that's one oh eight.
Yep.
And there's only seventy spaces additional to that, correct?
Yeah, there's, and then if we were taking into account the garage spaces on the thirty-five down below. The thirty-five.
In that additional seventy, are you counting some driveway parking as part of that?
Yes, it's total. It's driveway parking plus garage parking plus these little areas that are shown on the plan here. These five spaces plus the two spaces.
Okay, when I see these five spaces, where are the, where do I see the other ones?
Uh, they're, yeah, right there.
Two over here. There's also some slanted parking over here.
There's ten, there's ten on, there's ten on that row there.
Yeah.
Okay. Have an older one?
The, no, I don't think they did any revisions between.
So Jerry, you're short maybe about nine spaces. You have a number on that. I think that's where it was kind of, what's the modification? What would you need? Cause you need, you need one oh eight.
Yeah, w- we're short twenty-one.
Yeah.
When you say short twenty-one, is that including the ten that we have, the, uh, easement, the cross easement with Kevin?
No, no, that, if, if we include, if we include these ten out on Mill Street, then that brings that number down to eleven. And then if we use the ones on the southern portion on, uh, Continental's lot there, that gives us another fifteen, I believe. So we would have ample parking at that point, just by using the cross parking agreement.
But I, I, I think.
That parking area that I see between the bottom part of the townhouses development and the, the personal care home, that, that kind of long rectangular strip, that's, that's a common parking area between the houses, the development and the, and the personal care home?
Well, it's, no, it's not common parking. That would be the parking for the assisted living. What's required for the hundred and eight minutes.
That's dedicated to the assisted living?
Yes.
Okay.
But you just said that there's cross parking easement.
That's on Kevin's, on Kevin's side.
Okay, so that was my question. Is it across all? Oh, okay, right. Well, that was my question. Is it across all three parcels? So it's only across the retail parcel?
So I think what, so what they're saying basically is, let's refer to this as the southern parcel because it's south of Cooper Street, uh, just for standard purposes. So for the southern parcel, these driveways, uh, for the most part are all large enough that they can accommodate the two off-screen parking spots.
Yeah, so there, there would be, there'd be no modificate, there'd be no modification on that. And, and then we, we didn't add any guest parking there, like I mentioned earlier, because just we liked the idea of the green space and, and we're right on the number without an issue down there.
Right. So these, these ones, the northern parcel, that's the one where they're picking up some extra spaces here and here, um, have reciprocal agreements for, um. Of this whole thing, um, then, you know, just some of the different spaces that they've discussed potentially being put up on here would augment.
So on the northern, on the northern side, just so we're all, I guess, on the same page, so this is pretty simple math, uh, even though Jerry screwed it up earlier. I'm just kidding, Jerry. Uh, so there's, so on this side, like, like Dan Dizeroff suggested, um, we can make a modification to that five-unit building that's closest. So those aren't gonna have, those will have the twos. And then you've got four units and four units, that's eight. And then you've got six units, so there's fourteen. So the remaining, you know, since we're not counting garages per the ordinance, so that would be twenty-eight total spaces. Um, the reciprocal easement area has ten, and I think logically speaking, that's right next to it. So it makes a lot of sense that people would utilize that. Um, RJ, is that five in that area there or Jerry?
Over here, this is five and then there's.
Jerry, could we, uh, do you think we'd get it, could you get a sixth space in there or is five the max there?
Might be able to squeeze another one in there.
Okay, so maybe we get that to six. I'm sorry, say that again.
I think it's supposed to end building back, what you talked about.
Yeah.
You, you may be able to get another space in there.
Okay, so that.
Forty-four goes back, it looks like that would be an additional space there.
Yeah, so we could get six there. I think that two could also then go to a three, like you said, Dan. So that's nine, you have the ten, that's nineteen, and what did I say? We needed twenty-eight? So I, I don't think over between building forty-five and thirty-six, creating a little parking area there, I don't think you're gonna get the exact number. So I guess that's where the question would be, um, that we might have to do a modification. The number of, the number of spaces at this point now would be very minimal. Um, but I think, I don't think we're gonna be able to get to the exact number of two per, per unit. Unless I'm missing something, RJ, but that's kind of the math I'm coming.
No, I mean, that, that sounds about right to me. And Al, I think maybe given it the number that you saw provided, that would just have to be updated in the next round.
Yep.
Okay. Um, you're just a general question for me. Um, the, the perspective end user who would buy these units are uh, are they, are they family units or are you projecting that families would be living in, in these kinda units?
Um, you know, it's a mix. Um, it is, uh, it's some empty nesters, um, that want the ease of maintenance. It's, um, some people that, you know, have kids. We don't see a ton of like families with a lot of kids in our town and communities. There's some, but it's not, um, it's less than, it's left, less than fifty percent.
But in bakery square, there was, that was, it was, it was a fairly decent percentage of that, is that correct?
No, bakery square, it was even, I, I'm, I would project it in this area in McCandless here because you have a great school district, it's a great location. I, I think you'd actually have more bakery square, uh, families with kids out of the fifty-two units. Um, the initial sales, I think five families had kids out of fifty-two.
So if, if that was the case, you had something, is there enough green space or plot area around for kids in the way the development's situated?
Yeah, I, I think there is, you've got a great park, I mean, right, that, that nice central park that they created that Kevin's doing, um, and Continental. Uh, and then, and there's.
They'd have access to that, there would make no issue with them being.
Correct, yeah.
Right here is, is the central courtyard.
Yeah, I've seen it. I, I was there today and I'm proud, but I, I didn't know if they would have access to it or anything.
Yeah, the original intent of this whole McCandless Square development was that all the tenants would be able to come in and stuff.
It's a park, not that far from this area. It could play, that's the park. That's across, part through the, uh.
Yeah, yeah, that, well, you have to cross a couple of roads to get there, that would be the.
You know what? I, I think that actually with this development, I wanna say, correct me if I'm wrong, we might actually have sidewalk connectivity at that point from the McCandless Square to Town Hall. And so then they would have access to the playground. Well, right, but I mean, there's, yeah, they would, they would, they'd have to, yes, they'd have to cross the McCandless Drive, yeah.
Yeah, you still have to.
Right, but that should be, yeah.
RJ, I, I don't know if I followed that. Are you saying, um, or is there gonna be a walkway to North Park from here?
Um, no, so we actually, it's sort of like off-screen, if you will. In this direction, like over here, if my clicker is showing up, is, is where the office is. And so back behind our office, we have, um, tennis courts, it might be pickleball courts now, I'm not sure. Um, play, play sets, um, a baseball field. So that's, that would all be sidewalk connected once this is finished.
Okay, that's great. I didn't realize that. That's good.
There's a short break in the sidewalk on McCandless Drive, but we're trying to work on that.
Great. Yeah, I think one of the selling features in these communities is the walkability. You know, with the mixed use type of thing and having some retail and services. Um, and there's an intricate sidewalk system through this whole plan, so, um, I, I think it'll be nice for the people that live there that you've got a walkable situation rather than always having to get in your car.
This is the overall, um, development.
At, at the bottom of this screen that we're on, there's a kind of a hash line. Is that the walking path that we had previously talked about?
That's correct.
And who, who builds that?
Uh, it should be in by Continental.
An Oscar is all of them.
And RJ, is the, um, Port Authority hooking up to that down there at the, uh, southern side?
Uh, not, not at the southern side. Um, I believe there's some sort of utility down here. They are, however, uh, I did speak with their government relations person, um, I think it was in November because they just wanted to make sure that there was this sidewalk connection going across here. But I believe, yeah, I see there's a gas line coming in through here, so that's why nothing was done across this line here.
But, um, we were, our original.
Oh, you know what? That, that's actually, the Port Authority property doesn't go all the way down there, now that I think of it. Um, I would, I would have to pull up the park and ride, uh, you know, a different file. But I, I think that the Port Authority's property parcel, yeah, ends right up about here. So down here where this would hook in, that is not owned by the Port Authority. Yes, yeah, that's correct. That's, that is the rain property down there.
What does this cross parking agreement or easement work again? Is it just specific to those identified, uh, diagonal spots or is it broader in scope? And what if someone decides to park somewhere else other than the appointed spots?
I believe that's across the development.
It, it, it's, it is across the development.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't read it since November, but if I recall correctly, it's, you know, all, basically all phases throughout. Um, the side proportion that isn't, right?
Yeah, I think that, I think the goal was that, um, the Continental, the assisted, or the, you know, the empty nester, you know, assisted living rental stuff, as well as our community that, yeah, the parking on the other side is, there's cross easements between those different uses.
There's a part in this plan as it is. Is, is anyone actually looked at the intensity of the real expected parking before we go out and just start making more parking?
Are you talking about this part of the development or is it across the whole?
I guess as to all the spots outside of the, the personal care home spot, so the northern part of the whole plan, if everything up there by the daycare on both sides, the daycare, if I'd raise your drive, could be used by the townhome visitors. Like there, there's a ton of parking.
Yeah, so obviously the phase one kind of predates, um, my being here. But from what I recall, the parking requirements for the assisted living facility was pretty much met because they have, you know, a certain number of beds equals one parking space equals three. Um, they also had to have a certain number of parking spots for peak staffing, um, per shift. And so that mapped out to be pretty close to what they need. I think they had a little bit extra. Um, the retail, the phase two portion, of course, it's changed somewhat since the master plan was originally approved, since that was pre-twenty twenty. Um, but from what I recall, our traffic engineer's analysis, this is, this was comfortable for the retail, um, but not overly generous. So, but to your question about intensity, I mean, that really is kind of what we're trying to tease out here is, do we need to dedicate, you know, visitor spots for, for each unit?
Was that intensity of the cross contemplated on, on one of those large facilities being the daycare?
Yes, yeah, they actually, um, so if that had been, this one over here, if that had been permitted as straight retail, the square footage per code, which I do think our retail parking is pretty generous, but, um, they would have been a lot. The daycare portion was actually specked out based on, um, a demand request from tenants that they have signed. Um, and so actually the majority of the requirement came from this other, you know, commercial, what we're hoping is gonna be a food hall building, um, which could have significant parking demands, especially compared to childcare.
It seems to me for, for a facility that's located next to a park and ride block that has a design feature of interconnectivity, a lot of sidewalks, and then we just load it up with more parking in something that is or is basically next to a flood plain, adding more impervious surface. But I just don't know what the ultimate goal of, of that is.
Well, you just go, I mean, my, my experience in these townhouse developments is it is ideal if you don't have the additional spaces in, in the front like they do on the thirty-five below, that it is, I'm, you know, to have some visitor parking spaces. And I think what they have right now is, is probably sufficient that they can add a couple more. I don't think that's overdone. Uh, what you don't wanna do is you don't want the township, the town, that they come around the range for parking. Uh, for these units.
Yeah.
That'd be more, you know, that could be, that could be tough. And now as we know, nobody likes to park too far away. So if, if you don't get the spaces, I think the ten that are, that are pretty close proximity are good visitor spaces too uh, to that upper group. I, I agree with Brendan, you don't wanna, you definitely don't wanna overparking. But, but what I recall in the retail was definitely real tight. Uh, it, it was kind of, it was a recent planning commission, they give him the benefit of the doubt there. So dependent upon this final fence, that may or may not be. There might be times when you're looking for spaces and people are trying to park in a parking ride to use the beer hall, that might be there, you know, whatever, whatever that might be, if it's very popular. Uh, there could be days when it's stretched apart. So, and, and you don't want those people, you don't want the people in their residential fighting with those people to try to park in the retail spaces either. I mean, you don't wanna create that situation. It might not happen very often, but if it does, it could create some problem.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I mean, I think anyone that's, that's worked with me long enough knows that I'm no fan of overparking. Um, and I, I think that especially with this, well, I guess it's not shown on this page, but I can scroll down. Um, with what they've done on this side, you know, they did initially come in with, I think, maybe another unit can visitor parking all of this area. And it was specifically my request that they add some green space there. So they managed to preserve that and still pick up some of those visitor spots. Um, so, you know, this is, this is actually, you know, back a little bit from what the visitor parking originally was gonna be.
Yeah, and you're correct, RJ. We did, we did lose at least one unit, maybe two, from the original, original design.
I know what you're saying, Brendan, is actually enough application for a modification.
That, that's a real balance because I think there are some people who think the world has got too much parking. Let's, uh, let's turn it into a walking society and a mobile society as opposed to a driving society. And I think there's something to be said for that.
I mean, ultimately, the consumers choose where they wanna live, you know? And I don't think anybody is gonna look at this plan and say, well, I, I, this would have been perfect and I wish I hadn't bought this house, if only I had known that there weren't five more. You know, but, I mean, it, it, that really is kind of the, the question that's for everyone, like, is, is this the look and feel um, that you'd like to get out of this space?
Any other comments?
I'll just add that the townhouse development that was associated with the Taylor's crossings, there was no extra parking put in there, like no satellite parking block. Now, they did get the two per unit, I believe, on those ones, but.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of any.
I think you're, I think you're right. I mean, that was obviously before time, but that was in the, uh, development district, BG Development District. Um, and as well as I think that that may even be in the traditional perimeter overlay section. Um, so what all that means is there, there are different parking performance standards. Um, whereas this is in the C five zone, which falls in more traditional parking. So yes, if this was done theoretically in the McCandless Crossing, again, this would not even be, you know, the lines question, yeah.
Oh, uh, okay, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. Cause you just said that McCandless Crossing had two parking states. Are you talking about garage spaces?
They're talking about garage spaces, yeah. And I think the two driveway spaces as well.
Driveway spaces. So my point is, they did have sort of a satellite.
Oh, right, right. But the problem, but the issue here really is they've done a wonderful job on the southeast of getting all of their driveways adequately sized to meet that requirement. So it really comes down to on forty, forty through forty-four, can they switch that up a little bit to get, or make sure, you know, I don't know if sixteen is long enough, but it kinda is. Uh, push them forward and more parking. So they're, they're, you know, they're getting darn close.
Um, yeah, cause this one, if, if they move that unit back a couple of feet, this is already a length of sixteen plus this.
I just wouldn't like to see, um, in their nice little triangle that I assume will be nicely landscaped where people, because so many, the majority of these, the, on the northerly side, don't have, um, driveways, um, I just hate to see people starting to like park around the exterior of the, you know, of, of the nice little.
Right, right.
Center space. I mean, I, I personally think they should try to get as close to meeting, um, the two not, two not garage spaces per unit requirement. And, um, it sounds like they have, it sounds like you have some opportunities to tweak it positively a little bit. Um, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I also am not, if, if it's a couple spaces.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it never, it's, it sounds like there's some opportunity to pick up a few more, maybe the action item um, for Marty and Jerry is to see what they can get out of it, you know, make their official modification request on the number. They can get, get, you know, the required, um, and, yeah, everyone feels about it next time.
Perhaps a bigger picture question, well, what is the genesis of the two non-garage parking space requirement? Or is like, is really, for a lot of these. Where it's like, because really, for a lot of these four. The ones that being two in the garage and then two on. On the driveway in the southern. They're like, why does garage, why garage is not?
That might have been one of those nineteen seventy-eight relics. I'd have to check the exact option date on that something, but, uh. Without speculating is something that happened before it was born. There, you know, that, that's a function of density control, honestly. Um, the more space that you have to take up per driveway, the more space you need to put in for yards, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so it's a way to space things out to require we can look at them in the cars of history.
Any water flooding concerns outside of the stormwater project, but. With so many houses going in. How concerned are we about, uh? The naked natural flooding from the retail?
I believe this is well out of the floodplain. Um, but again, Jerry, you were here when phase one of the original master plan was done, so jump in if I. Am mistaken in anything here, but I believe that you are ultimately reducing. The total impervious surface area that was scoped out when it was the flex office. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we also did a very robust, uh. Analysis of Pine Creek, both upstream and downstream. CEC was involved, um, with the, the floodplain mapping of the adjacent parcel, the rave cinema parcel. Um, Greg Quachak led up that design effort or analysis effort. And, uh, when we did this project for the assisted living and the cottages, we reran that model. And we proved that we were not generating any upstream or downstream, um, flooding impacts on Pine Creek. Um, and to RJ's point, um, our original stormwater report, report. Uh, indicated that our pond that's currently on the, uh, east side of the development was. Size to be able to convey all of the stormwater from the project and control it. And release it less than predeveloped and these townhome developments actually reduced the impervious by about a half an acre.
I'm your stormwater guy, right? Any thoughts?
No, I mean, with where it's located, it is out of the floodplain and, um, and, and, yeah, I, I agree with everybody.
How different is this location than rave? Has that raved in underwater?
Yeah, rave is, the rave cinema site is much lower.
That whole thing.
Yeah, looks kind of flat, but it's so long that we don't have a. Who would have thought about proving all these places when everyone knows how to flood? Thing. I'm making sure we're thinking.
I don't think that it's, oh, maybe it actually is kind of shown on this. Let me see if I can.
Three hundred, three hundred is probably better. Three hundred shows the proposed grading.
I'm just wondering. I want to get down here, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, that C three hundred there will show the three oh one.
Yeah, I, I was going, here we are.
Four hundred.
Okay, so. If. Yeah, see these kind of bigger hash marks here? And then I think this is the property one. Yes, this is, this is the floodway right here. Um. And I think a, a bit of the lower portion of the site is in the floodplain.
Yeah, that's, that's second dash line. There's a second dash line there, RJ. If you go back to where it says FEMA. Floodway, AE floodway, next one, next.
I see it, yep. So, so this thinner hash line here is where the floodplain ends. So, and I think that the, when they originally scoped this, they specifically kind of put this trail in so that it didn't hit any of those wetlands or flood. I think these markings right here are the wetland areas.
Yeah.
Um, so pretty much everything that they're actually doing since outside of the floodplain, I, I know it's kind of counterintuitive because rave is. Right over there, but the actual elevation change and how they did these blood maps, um, it kind of curves almost, you know, like this. With the, with the rave side, so they're outside of it.
Is that a, you know, confessing rooms on this park, but is that, is that a meaningful? Our business.
That's an interesting question.
That is a, it's a modeled one hundred year frequency. What level?
How many of those do we get on average?
Well, on average, you have a one percent chance.
When, when you have a five hundred year flood, that's. Ask the stormwater engineer, but point being those, those five hundred year floods, fifty year floods or whatever, what that really is is fifty percent out of a hundred rest.
Yeah, you, you could have, uh, two hundred year floods back, back. I mean. Possibly.
Just is there, is there any way to model? Those types of events such that if you say this is truly. Percentage wise and frequent, there's a way to gauge the expected impact of that, say, yeah, like we're, we're out of the floodplain or the floodway. And even if we get one of these rare storms that puts down a lot of water. Um, we still don't think will impact this because. We're a certain number of feet beyond that and we would expect. You know, the carrying capacity of Pine Creek will only be a certain amount. Such that literally no more water could come down that way, just something like that to be able to say.
Yeah, so, so FEMA. Essentially like the regulatory way to look at this are these FEMA lines, that's what we can think is.
It's based upon detail mapping and extensive studies. So you can ask them, if you're sorry to say it, you can ask them to put the five hundred year line on and see what it is.
I just don't know if that's a meaningful enough, I, I don't know the meaningful line to be able to say like.
What, what does our?
Meaningful line is an angle of a hundred year line.
Yeah.
So they couldn't get a loan on the property to do what they.
What is our stormwater design requirements for what type of years?
I'm just thinking like, there's a lot of. Houston that wound up underwater.
Um, well, Hu- Houston, a couple of years ago, had a greater than ten thousand year frequency of that, which is very unlucky that it.
All right, it's something about, I mean, I'm, I'm not imputing the development here, it's just one of those things that like around town, everyone knows that this area generally floods. So I just want to make sure before we approve something and people are. Buying homes there. There at least we kick the tires and say, well. Whatever the case of frequency of the events. If, you know. It, it's. From where they are, it's, it's likely not going to impact them, even if it. Is probabilistically, you know, rare, it's not going to happen under any legitimately conceivable circumstance where you could actually build it. Like if everything's going to be underwater, then everything's underwater, but at least this isn't especially prone.
Sean, how often does FEMA update their maps and their?
It, it depends on their funding cycles.
Well, yeah, this one, this one is recently redone, but sometimes they're, they're twenty, thirty years old. That, well, that's. That's where I was going with this because. I forget what year Ivan was, but Ivan was the big one that, that flooded this entire area, put the brave cinemas underwater. And if they haven't updated their maps since then, then their maps, you could argue are not all that accurate. But you're saying that happened?
Yeah.
Well, rave, rave is no question, but. To Brendan's point is, it's awfully darn close to what was, uh, an underwater building that put it out of business. And it hasn't opened since, and we certainly don't want anything even close to that happening for this, and I'm sure the developers don't want it either. Uh, but, uh, we as a planning commission shouldn't. We, we should kick the tires and I hope we are.
Hi, yeah, and now that we're talking about floodplain. Is that? A floodplain line that goes circles around from Pine Creek and heads north? And looks like it goes into the building area of.
That looks like it might be zone eighty, but it doesn't appear.
Kind of goes into the buildings, right?
Yeah.
Eleven point one.
So it's, that's part of the old mapping that we were just talking about, but our analysis shows it actually off of our property. The actual, the actual flood boundaries when you model it.
So this is, this represents the, the current FEMA flood, flood map.
Right.
And you did your own study.
Correct.
Was that part of the original phase one, that that information was included? Because I know Shelley, both you and I weren't.
Yes. Yeah, we did that study as part of the initial development.
Can we get that study superimposed on this?
I don't think I have it on my computer. I don't have digital documents from before I was here, but, uh, I. I'm sure the copies exist.
Because presumptively those dashed lines go in somebody's kitchen. Thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, which means that thirty, you know, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-four and thirty-five can't be that far off the mark. It, it, it just seems very close to, you know.
See if I can pull the grade in.
Get some more information on.
So you'd have to look at, you'd have to look at the original grading plan to see that that was a low point from a parking lot. The old parking lot, whenever the Trader Joe's or whatever was in there in the border bookstore. There was a low point through the middle of the development that was, uh. At inlets, inlets at low points and.
So I'm kind of just spitballing here because again, I wasn't here for that one. But there are certain simulations where if you're constructing near, near the floodplain, it's not that it's banned, and this is, this is very common regulatory language. Not that it's banned, it's just that you either have to raise the lowest level a certain amount of feet out of the floodplain. Or shore it up to the extent that it's, you know, you're not going to get basement flooding.
Yeah.
And that's definitely recommended by the NFIP seminars.
Yeah, nine ninety-three is the foot and a half above the base flood elevation.
Okay, so, so right here, this grading line is nine ninety-four. Yeah, the foot and a half above base flood, which is, you know, where they take all of those lines from. Uh, that, that's pretty common.
Yeah, so co- my understanding continental, the, the final grade that's established for the town, these townhomes, now townhomes, but it was going to be office. For both the north and the earth, this, we're talking about the south piece because it's closer. Continental, when they developed it, they raised that, any of the areas that were either close or in the FEMA area. The final grade is out of it, so none of these units, um. They're going to be constructed on the grade. There's no basements. Um, that, so you'll have your garage and then we call it a flex room area is in the, the ground level. And then you've got your first floor, which is the kitchen, living area that you, your second floor is the bedroom, and then if they do the optional, you have the terrace. So these, these townhomes and in the strip district, just as a side note, you're talking about flooding. I, I now know more about flooding than I ever wanted to because. The strip district, we were on waterfront place, we're across the street from the apartments. Um, that entire area is in the floodplain, the actual dirt. Now, the apartments, they're out, the actual physical areas out of it, so the developer was able to get insurance. So we just have to make sure. First of all, the site, the, this whole site's out of the floodplain, which is good, and then additionally. The first floor elevations, if you look, that's what that FFE stands for, so just for fun, look at number twenty-nine. Um, so your FFE. Uh, yeah, unit twenty-nine, so Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong with any of this, but just in layman's terms, because I'm not an engineer, but. Uh, FFE, so it's nine ninety-eight point one seven, okay? So that's first floor elevation, that's the garage and the flex room, uh, the ground level. That's, that, that would be the minimum that we would set that at. Now, we might set it a little higher, but that's the minimum. And I believe Jerry said earlier that nine ninety-three was the foot and a half. Level area greater than the floodplain. Is that correct, Jerry?
Yeah.
So nine ninety-three is a foot and a half, we're at nine ninety-eight on unit twenty-nine, so we're five feet. Above the foot and a half, so it'd be six and a half feet. Um, so I think from our perspective, all, all these homeowners, they're going to get different insurances and things like that, so we have to make sure that it's done correctly. Um, and so, again, just getting back to your point about, hey, we really need to make sure of this. This is something that we scrutinize and get into a very good level of detail, but all of these ground levels, if you look at these FFEs. Um, they're not even close to the, the floodplain area. Does that, does that make sense, what I just said? Hopefully that doesn't confuse things.
Any more questions? Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what, are we going to be recommending something or do we still need to see more information presented?
So I, I had it on here that if you guys wanted to make a recommending motion, we would take public comment. Um, I think that based on the parking discussion for sure, we want to get some more information. Before you all make a motion, so of course that's all, that's up to you. Oh, let me see. We don't have anyone on. The Zoom except for the developers and our account.
So based on what I think I just heard you say, RJ, is that what we probably ought to do is get the further information regarding the parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and. Take another look at this, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I'd also like to see a rendering of the other side of the building.
Do you have a rendering of the other side of the building?
You mean the rear elevations?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can have that, I can get that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so RJ, just to make sure that, um. So what we will do is, uh, Jerry will look at adding some more spaces on that north side. And for motion purposes, then, for the modification, we should probably know. What the deviation is because, um, the required number is fifty-seven times two, right? So we, so for the next meeting, I just want to make sure we're as clear as possible, so it, it's easy to either, you know.
Right, yeah, you, you would look at a specific number and then we put that in the recommended.
All right, perfect, yep, we can do that.
Revision, typically we ask for two, two, four weeks to get them into that development at email address. Um, so Gateway can have time to issue when we do do that.
So we'll be able to, uh, we would be able to be on next month's agenda then, right?
Uh, yeah, if you get those in.
Okay, Jerry, that, that probably isn't going to take too long to do, right?
No, that'll, that'll be fine.
Yeah. All right, and then I'll get, I'll get some rear, um. I mean, we built these, like I said, bakery and then the strip, so I'll get some actual rears, um, of what they look like.
Any time straight for action.
No, so this is, um. We skipped over the motion to accept the application for review. Actually, so. Before we, before we pack it up here, let's make sure that we actually get that motion on the record, that starts the block. Council has ninety days from today to begin.
So we need an official motion to accept the application for review, which, uh, was not made at the beginning of this discussion when it should have been made.
That is okay legally, but we should definitely do it.
But we can, we can do it now and that's acceptable, so would someone please make a motion to accept this application for review?
I'm moving to accept the application for review.
Okay, we have, uh, Greg and Sean. Okay. Anything else?
Roll call vote? Or no, sorry, I'm sorry, voice vote. If you all accept the application for review, say.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we do need to vote on that, yes, please vote on the motion, uh, to accept the application for review.
All right.
Okay, now we are housekeeping. All right, thank you, got your marching orders, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we can, we can do a table motion. Why don't we do that while they're disconnected in here? Um, okay, so Dan, you would ask for a motion to table?
All right, easy enough. I asked for a motion to table this application.
A motion table.
Second, second, well, second.
Okay, I believe we will. Oh, yeah, we have to actually fill in all that.
All right, now let's vote on that. All in favor.
Sorry, usually filling all my little voting blanks, but I didn't have the chance to do that today, so I'm thrown off. Um, okay, so I, I just want to note, Greg, I appreciate this point itself. The minutes approval motion did not make it onto the agenda itself. However, the November minutes are done and we're uploaded to the Dropbox. Steve, if you're still with us.
I am.
Because of those new sunshine laws, if they would like to approve the minutes, do we need to do anything?
Well, the minutes, the motion for the minutes is not included on the agenda, which it doesn't appear to be.
Right.
The planning commission would need to make a motion to amend the agenda to add it. And then if it's added, vote, right, there'd be a vote to add it. Then you could vote on the minutes. So there'll be two total votes. And then the agenda would have to be updated and posted within twenty-four hours of the meeting.
We can make that happen if you all feel comfortable with doing.
Well, I think it makes a lot of sense. Why don't we, can I get a motion to add the approval of the minutes to the, turn it again?
I move that we have approval of the number.
Sean, so moves, second? Greg, second. Now that it has been, we have to vote on it. I always forget to vote. Now let's vote on that. All in favor, say aye. Now we have to actually vote on these.
Motion to consider and then move.
We need a motion to consider.
Or well, to approve, whatever.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Whatever you would like to do with them, you must measure it.
Happening. Steve, get control of this. What is happening?
Hear what's happening. I mean, if, if we just added it to the agenda, then the next motion should be motion to approve the minutes.
That's it.
I have a motion to approve the minute. Al is, Al is submitting a motion, and a second from Sean.
All right.
Now let's vote on the minutes. All in favor, and this will not include the people who were not at that meeting. So the new members that were not at that November fourth meeting. I was not at the meeting, but I have since seen the YouTube on it. So I, I will be able to vote. So all in favor of approving the minute.
Let me just, I just want to find it on the first page of this minute, at the last paragraph. You have some, an interesting comment. If the stormwater design codes require are the developers notified neighboring property, could you sometime, I'm sorry, I didn't send you an email. Give us a site and, and what exactly what that means.
Yeah, so I think it's in the nine thirteen section. It's basically just a, you know, it's a sub letter in there that says that my developers have stormwater controls that they're installing at some point, you know, along the approval process. They need to send certified letters to the adjacent property owners, letting them know that a development is going on and stormwater controls are being installed. It's very brief, you know, no real details are there on the set of the plans or anything. They just have to show us evidence that they've notified the adjacent property owners, that the development and stormwater controls are going to be installed.
So when do they have to actually send us notes before the planning commission meeting?
It, it doesn't actually provide a required timeline. So that could range from, you know, they turn it in before you even get here, they turn it in before capital approvals, or it's something that's noted in the engineer's letter. But the code doesn't require one way or the other to do that.
Yeah, because I like to get the neighbors to review these things before the planning commission, so they know that this is going on. That doesn't, does that?
Well. We, we are updating those. That would be, that would be in the stormwater management order, which I don't think we changed. Did we think that?
No, we didn't.
That's true. We have not actually advertised the draft yet. So if there's something specific that we like to see, now they, I don't know that we would want to require them to send a full set of plans because if those are technically copyrighted materials, that would be kind of hard to, you know, require people to do on. But so they know that something's going on. I mean, yeah. Perhaps. Yes, it does typically mention that. Yeah. So maybe something that we could talk about, you know, Dan, before that hits the paper for updating the ordinance is, you know, whether council wants to add a requirement as to, you know, this must be submitted before the plan is, you know, approved by council or something like that. Because you, there are hangovers, you know, technical comments and things like that.
Well, I'd like to see it before the planning commission, you know, so the, the neighbors have a, have a chance to speak before us as to what's going on, what they're concerned.
So simultaneously with the obligation, they should be sending a letter.
Right.
That, that's your design.
Yeah, so it gets before, before it's reviewed by the planning commission. And therefore they know what's going on and they'll come, you can come in and, and make their comment.
We can put that on the, yeah.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? I don't think there's anybody on, I think we just checked.
You don't have anyone, yeah.
So I, I took that to mean there would be no public comments.
It seems fair unless Tim or Steve would like to make one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so there are, there's not appeared to be any public comment on tonight's meeting because no one has, has phoned in. Now, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Sean has so moved, second? Second Brendan. All in favor? Motion or meetings adjourned?